Smart phone.
Jim, do you have anything?
Yes, you can start. We want to talk a little bit, there's a lot this evening actually, about a proposed addition to the existing streets program. We've been working on it. The council has presented counsel of asking for the use of the projector. We have some photographs I'd like to show you from around town of the street conditions we want to address. We think we have a proposal that makes sense financially, given our current financial situation. It does not impact, I think, it does not impact the general fund very significantly on the HDMI. We have an HDMI cord here.
I'm thinking about DGA cameras.
I have a DGA.
Yeah, the box is...
We've been assiduously, the engineering department, I shouldn't say credit for it, the engineering department has been very carefully observing the condition of the streets. We have a report here, we're handing out now the multicolored packages you're about to see. As you know, our current, at least we closed last year with about $200,000 in cash and reserves, and we're projected to finish flat, the exception of about $800,000 that was paid out of the bond retirement fund, which is exactly what it's allocated for. And I believe that council, before I get into the actual package, I believe that council should continue at least returning a quarter million dollars a year out of the general fund, applying it to that bond retirement fund so that we know that we can at least address the debt payment that we know is going to be coming in the next couple of two, three years. What we're looking at here, let me show you first the, let me show you first the multicolored pavement. If you'll take a look at the top, these are streets rated by condition from worst to arguably best in the city. They're not obviously all of the streets in the city, but they're the ones that either have had attention devoted to them or we feel should. So the orange ones are those that we're looking at for the 2015 program. You'll also notice the printables that we sent out. These are itemized here and what we think we can arguably afford to repair these. The worst street that has had no attention, that's the orange, in the city, in accordance with the engineering standards that have been provided, is Calvin Drive in Ward Two. As you recall, we did a little bit of work there in 2014, as you see noted to the right, the 2014 road maintenance program.
So you have to hit function and...
Okay. We don't want to lose the positive yardage that we made on Calvin. We've handed out this chart. There was some proposal made that we should not be spending any money on streets at all in the city. This chart illustrates, this one, you guys will have it, is that there is an increased cost to be paid if we allow a street to deteriorate beyond a certain point. In the square, in the rectangle off to the left, it notes that each $2 of renovation in the first few years, first couple of years, runs a couple of dollars. That same street, you'll see the chart falls off, starts to accelerate to $6 or $8. So that $2 becomes a $6 or $8 if you allow the street to deteriorate beyond a certain point. So to be penny wise now only means that we will be pound foolish in future years if we allow that condition to exist. Can you imagine? Did somebody shut off the lights? Thank you. I have some photographs. Before I go back to this, I want to show you some photographs. They went around town and photoed...
Streets by 15.
Streets by 15.
You were just up by it.
Did I get someone?
Mayor, third row out.
Right there.
The last corner.
There it is. Thank you. You can see better there than I can here. This is a little slideshow. I'll just start, I'll just start here and just show you what we're talking about. This is Calvin Drive. This is the street that we did some work on in 2014. Some full depth repairs were done, but you can see that there are still other repairs that need to be made here. Again, if we ignore... This street will continue to deteriorate to the point where it will cost more money in the following years to repair it than if we simply addressed it this year. Next pictures, this is also Calvin looking in the opposite direction. You see over here how the road has actually collapsed. This is an area that was repaired a few years ago. You can see how it's actually fallen in over here, collapsing. Stop me if you have any questions. This also is Calvin looking back towards St. Francis. Again, you can see the same kind of damage happening here along the curb. These expansion joints are opening up again. I'll try to breeze through this pretty quickly because I think I'm getting the point here. This is Calvin again, looking in the opposite direction. Again, notice what's happening to the expansion joints. This street was actually repaired last year slightly. Some money was put into this. Calvin again. This is some patchwork that was done. Look what's happening here and here. Again, Calvin. Look at this area here. This is facing, I think that's where Cabrini intersects with Calvin. Here we have another Calvin. This area you can see has been repaired. This is part of the 2014 project. You can see the difference between the two sections here. No updates there too much. Okay, now, this is where we stand as of yesterday on Chatham. This is Chatham. I think they're at the point now where they're basically going to put on the last layer. This is one of the streets up in obviously Ward One that is just about to be finished up. Just wanted to, like, you know, what the progress was there. You can see it's almost done.
It's supposed to be finished tomorrow as a side job.
Tomorrow, okay. Visited Cherrywood. Cherrywood, as you'll notice here, is also marked in orange. This street is one of the worst streets in the city. You can see how there are chunks just missing. Look at this, what's happened here. Another winner with applause hitting that, and that will be one too. Another view of Cherrywood here. You can see what's happening. I'll repeat what I've been saying about all the other pictures. Cherrywood again, looking to the north from the south, looking into the cul-de-sac. East Park Lane. East Park Lane, you'll also notice in the list, is one of the worst rated streets in the town. This also is East Park Lane in the opposite direction. East Park Lane again, notice what's happening here. Asphalt patching is being repaired. We've got repairs on top of repairs here.
What is all that snow that goes big?
I'm sorry?
Does that all go into the cutters? More effective than having a...
Oh yeah, that's a very good point. What happens is...
And then this, because it's pretty bad. I mean, I've got buckets of snow that I carry in my hat.
Well, one of the streets...
But I'm the only one.
One of the streets we're proposing to be repaired in this list is East Park Lane. Essex, this is where Essex stands as of yesterday, almost ready to be finished. This is what can be done with some of these other streets if we just simply step up and do what's right here. This is Forest Overlook. Forest Overlook, you'll see from the list, in Ward Three, is one of the worst rated streets in town. And also Forest Overlook in the opposite direction. Forest Overlook again. You can see the kind of patching that was done here years ago. It's starting to fall apart again. Again, Forest Overlook. This, I think, is Linda Lane here. And this is...
Pinnacle.
Pinnacle. Yeah, this is, we're going to hit Pinnacle this year, but just so you have an idea, this is the kind of stuff we're dealing with around town. We have an answer for Pinnacle, but this is what we're dealing with. This also is Pinnacle, looks in the opposite direction. Go back to Calvin. Okay. Shut this up. Did somebody hit the lights, please? I think I've already shown you what you already know, that we have a lot of streets in our town that need attention. As I've demonstrated, this is, this is actually from our engineers, this chart. I didn't put this chart together. There is an accelerated cost over time to allow a street that can be prepared now to ignore that for years out will cost us considerably more to repair than it does now. So let me, let me go back to this multicolor chart here. What we're proposing as part of the 20, as addition to the 2015 program that we already have in place is the package you see here. We're proposing Calvin Drive in Ward Two. We think we, again, these are engineering estimates. These are not bids, obviously. We're proposing 120,000 there for asphalt resurfacing. We're proposing in Ward Three, Forest Overlook between Karen and Donna Ray. That's the portion that's the most heavily trafficked. The part to the west of there is a cul-de-sac that is not as heavily trafficked. There's a lot of people cutting between Donna Ray and Karen across that part of Forest Overlook. And yes, we're also proposing in Ward Four, asphalt resurfacing of Cherrywood. And as an alternate to that, if you didn't want to consider doing those, we could consider asphalt resurfacing of Karen. Karen is another one of those streets that... ...to last year, and we certainly don't want to lose ground there, so avoid this from happening. Maybe we want to put that money into Karen. We're also going to be proposing to council, and that, by the way, is $350,000 estimated cost. We're also proposing $350,000 for the following streets. East Park Lane, well, each of these $25,000 until start of... East Park Lane, Joy Oval, Walnut Wood, East Decker, Tanglewood, Maple Hill Drive, St. Maron, Rolling View, Firethorn, Elm Court, Ruth Drive, Evelyn, and $15,000 into streets that gets ripped up when the sanitarys come in. Now, as an alternate to that, we're proposing $50,000 into Karen, Forest Overlook $25,000, and Cherrywood $25,000. These could be added to the maintenance program. As you can see, that totals to about $700,000 additional to the $600,000 that we're already proposing, meaning we're proposing a package for this year of 1.3 million. How do we pay for that? That's obviously going to be the next question. Well, as you recall, we've been trying to get funding, granting in conjunction with the city of Broadview Heights for spray. And we've set aside some money in an account for spray, in mid 20, 230, something like that. So we have just under a $40 million set aside that we're not going to be using this year for spray. So to be conservative, let's call that $200,000. The street, we feel that we could safely pull a quarter million to three out of that, roughly. Okay, but again, to be conservative, let's say 200 from the street maintenance program. And the rest, we feel we can take out of the general fund, $300,000. Now, how, how do we justify that? I want to remind everyone that a few years ago, when we sold the cell phone tower revenue, we have a revenue stream coming in. We have $433,000 coming from that transaction, which will more than cover this $300,000 that we're proposing to pay out of the general fund. So we're already projected to break even there. We started this year at 3.9. We're going to finish flat at about 3.9. And yes, that's because we paid $800,000 out of the bond retirement fund, which is exactly what it was designed to do. I want to ask council again, please continue putting at least a $40 million into that bond retirement fund so that we know we can address the bond payments as they come due. So what I'm saying here generally, and then we'll open up to questions of a technical nature to our engineer, we think that we can put together a $1.3 million street program this year, 600 already paid for, and 700 more paid for as I've just demonstrated here. Mr. Sickle?
Thank you. So as Mayor Rick mentioned, the things in orange are things that we're proposing for the resurfacing program. So that will end up with a, a street that looks just like Chatham Essex and the program we did last year. So it'll just be a resurfacing. We'll fix all bad spots for most of them with some full depth replacement, then we'll come in and put the asphalt on. So it'll be just very similar to what we did last year. And again, what we did just recently on Chatham Essex. As far as the maintenance items go, it's almost all the gray items, the darks are gray on almost every street. And I would almost say it is except for Forest Overlook, I think maybe the only one. And then is the cul-de-sac end, and we felt that if we were going to do some of Forest Overlook, we should do the portion where most of the traffic flows, which is in between the Karen and... ...the traffic flows right now. Also, at the very end, we'll be touching Forest Overlook as part of the Hemline Street program. It won't do anything major to the pavement that really is at the very end of that cul-de-sac, but we will be touching the cul-de-sac with that program. Other than that, if we had, as you can see, all items in white are things that we've either touched or we will be touching. So those we kind of hold out. Otherwise, I think we're catching most of the streets that are considered very poor on four at this time, which is, I can't say it's 40 percent, that's not really fair. Out of our scale of 10, it's the 1 through 4s, which are the worst, of the worst streets as a, as a term of centric.
I want to add a couple of things to this too that I forgot to mention. We believe that if we decide to do this, that to take advantage of economies of scale, it would be prudent to bid this out as one package with one contractor, both the maintenance and the resurfacing program, one contractor. Also, I should also indicate that we have about $60,000 left from the 2014 program that was not...
It's almost 56,000.
Okay, 56,000.
Just short of...
56,000 left from the 2014 program.
Maintenance.
Maintenance. What we could do with that is finish the cul-de-sac at Park View, or we could do a lesser fix there and take some of those funds and put it into this program. So we've got a little bit of extra money there too as well. So we believe that this is very affordable, very prudent, and it prevents the streets from deteriorating to the point that in future years it will be far more expensive to repair these streets.
As the mayor mentioned, yes, the streets will, they'll just continue to get worse and worse. We are best to put some money in, at least maintenance for, for this area. Once we do maintenance, it's good to go back in and try to cover that up so we don't lose it. Full depth replacement isn't as bad as the partial depth. Partial depth is where we remove a little bit of pavement and put those asphalt patches in. It makes for a nice smooth road for a little while, but it only lasts like three years and then the trucks are ripping it up. So it's best not to wait too long to try to cover that up. I mean, just, just for money reasons, to try not to waste money. The mayor also mentioned if we can do this all as one, one project, our fees, we only have to create one bid package. That's why I threw this memorandum out. It would cost about $7,500 just to put a bid package together. That's kind of our normal thing for this type of project, but we'd only have to do it once, and we'd have to have two packages if we could do it all. It would also probably cut down a little bit on the inspection because we have, we work in with one contractor and he would have his one or two sets of guys versus, because we have two contractors now, they're all over town, we're trying to cover a few spots. So it just, it's easier so possible for the inspection side to also...
Are there any questions on...
I've got a question, Jeff. I think you and I talked about this Forest Overlook from Donna Ray to Karen, that real big hump that's almost goes a little bit past there. We're talking about that too because we have a problem with the sewer line or something that's sinking in there and it's, it's a big dip. So we're talking about that area also that you and I talked about.
Yeah, and that's kind of why the contingency's in there, the 40,000. There is a spot that we aren't sure what's bad right now today, but it looks like it could be a super effective needs replace, one of those ones that just goes between cash breaks and pieces. So that, that contingency amount will probably be eaten up by now.
Just want to let everybody know that the last 10 years, service has been putting a lot of asphalt in one area. We still can't figure out why it's sinking, but it's a problem because it is such a dip. I'm worried about it in the winter time if we have snow falling, you know, cut some of that road out, so you and I talked about that.
Okay, I have a question. 2015, we were going to get 433,000 from sale of the cell tower leases. That 433,000, you're, you're saying we need to take how much of that for the road?
I said put it in the general fund.
Say that again.
Put it in the general fund.
Okay, we're going to put it in the general fund. What are we going to do to pay down our short-term notes? Do anything or just roll them over?
That's your call.
No, that's your call. Or you want to just roll them over?
I, I think we should continue paying them down. I don't think we should roll them over.
Okay, how do we pay them down? Out of the general fund?
Yes, the debt has to be paid. That's why we need to do something about that.
No, 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 no. Notes don't have to be paid right away. They can be rolled over.
But why wouldn't you?
Well, I don't know. Objects, you know, we can roll them over for up to five years.
Could. That's going to be your call.
So now you're saying that you want us to take the 433,000, put it all on the general fund, take 200,000 of that, apply it towards the road program, and take the balance of that and pay down our short-term notes?
No, I think, I think we should move money from the general fund according to the year, every year, as we have in the past, and put that into the bond retirement fund. We should...
Well, whether you put it in, well, whether you put it into the general fund or the bond retirement fund, you know, it goes into the left pocket or the right pocket.
Exactly. Except by doing what we did this year, we retain flexibility to actually fix the streets.
Okay, but you know, it doesn't take away from the fact that we had 1.6 million and now we have roughly 800,000. So you want to put 250,000 of that 333,000 in debt retirement fund. But we have roughly 2.8 million out there in loom payments that we have to pay, and we have, will have $900,000 or $950,000 to be paid.
Well, assuming those numbers are correct, which I don't, I can't argue with you because I have those numbers in front of me, I'll assume to the safety of the special to have correct. What's the alternative? Do we allow the streets to fall apart? We're sitting on 5.6 million.
You know, you keep saying 5.6 million. It's not 5.6 million. You have a looming debt out there, Mayor, a looming debt. So take that 1.6 million off the table because it's 800,000, which is going to be 950,000 if we put 250,000 in there to pay 2.8 million that we have to owe. Are you saying that you don't want to spend 200,000 out of the general fund to fix streets? I guess that's what I'm hearing you say.
You know, you know, no, I would love to, you know, I would love to fix every street in this city, but the problem is we don't, we don't have the money. I mean, we flat out don't have the money.
Certainly do have the money. You, you, in two years...
You'll be singing a different tune, Mayor.
In two years, you'll be singing a different tune.
That's rhetoric.
No, don't give me that rhetoric crap. You'll be singing a different tune.
Well, if you want to make this a soliloquy, we can make it that, or I can have an opportunity to reply.
Well, go ahead.
Please. We have, I think you'll agree, 3.9 million in the general fund. Yes or no? Yes, we do. So what I'm proposing will reduce that 3.9 to 3.7. Yes or no?
That's what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying. So how is it fair for you to say that we don't have the money?
Because next year, we're, we're all, in all likelihood, we'll be running another $800,000 deficit, which will take your 3.7 down to 2.9, and now we're starting to get into some treacherous areas there.
What deficit?
What are you talking about? You took, you took it from the debt retirement fund to balance the budget. You're going to do that again?
Exactly.
Take another 800,000 and then you'll have 250,000 left to pay 2.8 million. That makes a lot of sense to me.
Exactly what it was designed to do, Tim.
That's not, no, that's not what it was designed to do.
Our revenues are not be...
You are spending more than you're bringing in, period.
Again, you're talking about 200,000 out of the general fund. Now, if you want to tell the people in Ward Two...
Another 200,000 out of the general fund on top of 800,000 out of the debt retirement fund, and next year will be another 800,000 plus another 200,000. I can see how this is going forward.
If you want to tell the people in Ward Two, if they don't get their streets repaired, you can tell them that, Tim.
Mayor, you can tell them that. I want to repair their streets. This council's going to do whatever it wants anyway. It doesn't matter what I, what I think. Treat me no...
So you don't want to repair streets?
He just said, three minutes ago, he wants to.
I do, but we don't have the money to do it.
Let's do it. Let's all, let's hold hands and do it. We're talking...
You know, I sat through, wait a minute, I sat through, I sat through your town hall meetings, I sat through your state of the, state of the city affair, and what did I see? What did I see? We went to 2016, and that's where it ended. And everything was rosy, and we balanced the budget, and we can do a couple of streets, and things looked great. But 2016 is a day of reckoning, and they're going to be singing a far different tune in 2016 than you are right now. Go ahead and fix the streets. Go ahead. In fact, all in all, spend all of it.
All right, I'm talking about 200,000, Tim.
No, you're talking about more than 200,000.
I'm talking about 200,000 out of the general fund, Tim.
This year, and then...
Exactly.
And then, Rick, what are you going to do next year?
I'm talking about streets.
What are you going to do next year?
200,000 this year.
What are you going to do next year?
200,000.
What would you propose to do next year? How many times do I have to ask you that? What would you propose doing next year? Another 200, 400, 600?
What has that to do with the decision of...
It has everything to do with this, Rick, because it's our general fund that we're talking about.
We propose putting a tax levy on the ballot. That's a proposal.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, I know, you think the tax levy will just go wonderfully because you're going to sell it to the residents that we're giving you a rebate, $15 a year, so that's going to go over great. What happens when we start losing businesses? Or they come in and they want a tax abatement of 50 percent, and now we're paying, getting less money? What happens?
How many times have we beat this to death?
And you've never answered, you did answer, you said that they don't pay it on their withholding, and that is incorrect. They pay it on everything. So, yes, it is. Jack, if we offer an abatement...
The whole point of this discussion is that we are spending a ridiculous amount of money. And 2015 is, we'll, we'll call it balanced, even though, you know, we've moved things around.
You'd better call it because it is.
Well, it's half-assed balanced, but we'll call it that. 2016, we had big problems. 17 is worse, 18 is worse, 19, we're really in a jackpot.
We are not spending a ridiculous amount of money.
We're spending $700,000 more than we're bringing in this year.
That's on the debt. That is not, to run our city, we are not spending any ridiculous amount of money.
Now we're going to run our city, we're spending, we're spending $700,000 more than we're bringing in, just to keep the lights on, it's just to pay salaries.
This will put us at almost $1 million more than we're bringing in for this year. This has got to stop. I want to fix every street in the world too, but at what cost? If we continue on this path, there'll be no city left.
Yeah, because the streets are all going to go to hell. People are not going to be moving around. We're moving...
Change the course that we, this council's been on for the past four, five, six years.
Okay, so besides the income tax, what is it that you want us to change? You want to cut more people out of the service department?
I want to get to see the bare bones, Michelle, and get the finances back.
It isn't bare bones.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
Let me hear what...
We've got, what, two people that work for the firm?
What is bare bones?
What is bare bones?
Part-time building department. Pay, pay our cops less. Our chief, he's making a hundred...
We can't change that.
We can't change it now.
When he's retired in about a year or two, let's start talking about that.
When he is retired, he has to retire.
We already said we were...
He has to retire.
There are so many things that...
We already know, that is already set up.
I'm going to say what Tim said. Whatever I say isn't going to mean anything in the first place.
No, 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 let's hear what you... We have to say about cut the expenses to make it a hundred thousand dollars.
I have, I have, proposal after proposal after...
Okay, you got a part-time building department, $100,000.
I've put out proposals for years and you, as council president, shot every one of them down. I'm not going to play hit you right now.
What was your proposal?
I've put out tons of them. You have copied them.
When I asked you your proposal, you told, the only thing you brought forth was the income tax.
I want to know.
No, he did want to reduce the hours at the rec center. I do remember that.
Shut the lights off, right?
So, those people that have memberships that like to come before they go to work and go after their kids.
Want to get rid of the assistant, the right, one of the full-time people at the rec center?
One of the two.
One of the two.
So, he did have proposals.
Wanted to make, uh-
So, our community services got part-time.
No, he actually wanted it not hiring.
Oh, get rid of it?
Get, get rid of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you get rid of that, you get rid of home days in every community event?
Get rid of it.
Get rid of it.
Yeah, I've been saying it for three and a half years.
What does that say?
Why would you move to this city then?
$700,000?
I didn't move, I'm not staying in the city to have parties.
Why are you staying in the city?
You have no, no sense of community?
I love this town. Carol, you know, you've known me long enough to know that I love this city.
You have no sense of community? Bringing your, getting together with, with people that you don't see on a normal day basis?
Get this money, money, then no. Let's get, we brought up the baseball federation, baseball and basketball, you know, we subsidize that.
Okay, let's continue, let's continue back to the old story there and run the city down.
So, why did we spend the money, why did we spend the money on, to match the brand for the baseball federation? If we should go bare bones, why did we spend our money?
Came out of the parks fund, not the general fund, or the park maintenance fund.
Well, you didn't say that too when I talked about the fire department and the money, only $300 coming out of the general fund.
Because what's going to happen with that is one of these days when we need to buy a fire truck or an ambulance.
There's still, there's still the money going to be there.
But what if, what if a couple of those things break down at one time?
The money will still be there.
We don't know that.
It, it's not going to happen.
And we're flexi- rolled it out so we get $700,000 in additional revenue.
Terrific, but it's not going to break.
What if, what if one of the lieutenant retires and we get $150,000? There's a lot of what ifs out there.
That would be great, absolutely. But that doesn't change the fact of what's happening right now. We're spending 700, maybe $900,000 more than we're bringing in this year.
We planned for that. We put 250,000 over in that debt retirement fund for the last 40 years.
You didn't plan for that, Mike. It's still, it's-
And we want to continue doing it. You guys said don't do it.
So, you took half of it away. You took half of it away.
You took half of it.
Take a look, take a look what, take a look at what your payments are going to be for restructuring the debt and look at how much you've got in that debt retirement fund. If, if it's 20 percent, that, that's a stretch.
But that's why I think the mayor said keep our initial 250,000 while we have some money.
Oh, boy, now it's 23 percent. That's great. We're doing, we're doing great, Mike.
There's no doubt we need more revenue. The debate is obviously is that going to be by a levy or is that going to be by income tax? I think we all understand man's proposal and why it doesn't, man's proposal and why it doesn't work. Possible as it is to attract substantial businesses here, we're, we're swimming upstream. It costs more money for a business to operate in Southern Hills because of our tax structure than it does in the surrounding communities. When people are looking to locate to an area, they're looking at the region. They don't really particularly care what city they're going to. If we start at 2.5 percent and everybody around us is at 2 percent, now we have two knocks against us. It costs more to do business here and we, your employees and their business are going to pay substantially more. Now, Matt's fix to that is, well, let's offer them abatements. Well, with the other, so now we've not only prevented businesses from wanting to move here, we've also destroyed the very reason for raising the rate which is ostensibly to bring in more revenue. So, what's the point of the whole exercise? It's an exercise in utility.
Rick, you spearheaded the-
How often are abatements?
Abatements for the past two or three that we had.
But Matt, not at 2.5 percent. Not to get 2.5 percent, not to give back what we're trying to gain. What comes to stand?
Along with, we did 50 percent for five years and a quarter percent for the next five years, is that?
I still haven't heard how we get to $700,000 in cuts. To get to $700,000 in cuts, you got to cut the safety department, which I'm not willing to do, and you got to cut service to the people.
I never said, it's a lot of platitudes. So, unless, unless you enhance your revenue stream-
We have to enhance revenue.
You'll be out of that money darn quick. That's all I can tell you. You'll be out of money darn quick.
That's why Michelle's proposing that the-
Go for it then. Go for it then.
Put it on and see how it goes.
Go for it. Do it. Do it. Okay, can we get back to the discussion on the streets? Are we interested in looking at this or not?
I think, I think-
Well, we've heard what you think.
No, no, you didn't hear what I think. I'm trying to tell you that I think using the street maintenance repair fund to do about $350,000 worth of work is a good thing. I mean, that's what that money is there for. You know, spending another 200 or 300 on a resurfacing program. My question is, can our general fund handle it and still have sufficient money available for the next years, uh, the next few years balloon payments that are coming due and uh-
It was probably first balloon payment.
Which was 15, which was $60,000.
This is the little one, Mike.
This was the little one.
This is the little one. Wait until next year, wait until third year. Then, then let's talk again.
Then it gets real. So, if you guys can justify spending this money, knowing that we're going to run a $700,000 deficit next year and have these balloon payments come and do, then let's do it.
What I cannot justify is allowing the streets to fall apart.
But we're running out of money.
Where, Matt, I've said this before, we owe the residents services.
You're behind me operating.
You're going to reach a point where you aren't going to be able to do it regardless of how much you want to do. We're talking about-
You are rapidly reaching that point and if, and if this-
Let's get all of the enhanced revenue doesn't pass, it's just going to accelerate it. So, good luck. That's all I can tell you. Good luck.
I'm not going to agree with that. Everybody thinks we need more money.
No, people don't think we need more money because they think everything is just fine. That's my opinion. That's my opinion. People think it's just fine.
Michelle thought you could send out a letter explaining everything, David.
Oh, a letter, yeah, one letter would do great. Just like, just like we got that message out last time.
You keep saying that.
I'll, I agree with telling them that our revenues are, are $700,000 less than what our, our bills are. I'm willing to tell people that.
That's those besides Tim and I.
I think the mayor said that.
I don't think he did.
No, he says everything is perfect.
No, I think he said we spent more-
He says everything's good this year.
He said that we spent more than our revenue was.
Yeah, things are, things are tough down the road, but we're okay this year and we'll be okay.
No, not really.
Conceivably through 2016, that's almost verbatim.
Okay, I didn't say that he, but he did say that we had less revenue than we had bills. He said that. Well, expenses, thank you, that's the word. Expenses. He said that. If you guys didn't hear it, it's because-
I heard it.
Okay, then, he did say that and I'm more than willing to have that go out in something from-
I think you need more detail than that, Michelle.
I agree with that.
You did have to be-
Well, look.
It, it has to be far greater detail than what I'm hearing.
I agree with that.
These prices will only go up as the construction agreement, as a construction, excuse me, passes. The delay that was being caused by this kind of debate is only going to cost the city more money when it comes time to fix these streets. What I want to propose to council is to get these on an agenda and have it voted upper bound so that we can put together a bid package and get these out for bid. Now, if it turns out that the bids don't match what we're saying, council can always vote not to go ahead with the project, but to allow time to pass as we argue over whether we're going to try to repair the finances of the city here is counterproductive. What I'm asking council to do is to allow us, by voting on this at the next meeting, to allow us to go to bid on this, let's see how the bids come back and then we can all make a decision. I think it's penny wise and pound fool to allow these streets to deteriorate further.
Will they be able to start more this year?
Yes. What's our deadline?
I need 60 to 90 days to get the whole thing put together out the bid and the back due or approval from a contractor. So, now we're hitting August, September. So, yes, we could still hit September, October.
Forget we're not here in July. Yeah. Or August rather, same.
So, we can be, we were last year three different times, so.